So whatever your needs, so one day I learned and I wrote fast as the fish made it to drink. It was one of the first times in my life I really stood up for myself. And I've had enough, like if you're gonna say my name, say it right. But now I use fast as the fish made it to my to make a drink. Yeah, I had Dr. Taylor two years ago and then I had Ethan's father. Hello. Good thing sorry. I came in tonight. Yeah. We were all. He was fun. But could you wonder Chris didn't he? He's been quiet. I worry he's quiet.
Good evening and welcome to the March tenth twenty twenty four work session meeting of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If we could please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stone, if we could please have roll call.
Teresa Brown. Tara Connor-Halston. Susan Huntsinger-Hoff.
Here.
Maggie Kistner.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Aaron Stroup.
Here.
Aaron Whalen.
Here.
David Brown.
Here.
Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Seven board members present.
Thank you. Item two, review of the minutes. The February twenty fourth twenty twenty five Legislative Action Meeting minutes are attached for review and will be on the March twenty fourth twenty twenty five Legislative Action Meeting agenda for approval. Facilities Committee, Mr. Brown.
Yes, the administration and Mr. Jamie Lynch, construction manager from CHA, will present an update on the progress of the new Keith Valley Middle School Construction Project and Summer Capital Projects, and Bill Hambley.
Good evening. Before we start, just wanted to welcome Mr. Hambley and Mr. Colado from CHA, who are going to be presenting in the first part of the presentation. We have been providing updates on the progress on the Keith Valley Middle School Construction Project regularly through the Facilities Committee meetings throughout the last couple of years. And as we are getting closer to completion of the building itself, we will continue that regular reporting of the progress of the construction project this evening, but we're also going to be accompanying that with the second part of the presentation. Mr. Kircher, Principal of Keith Valley Middle School, and myself are going to present a little bit on some of the ways that we're going to be transitioning students and the community into the new building. So, Mr. Hambley, you're up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. How's it going? Love this weather outside. Finally, we get the sun. And you know what that means. It means the contractors are happy, they're working, they're getting a lot more work done than they have been in the past. So we're starting off here with our March update. We're going to be tag teaming this between myself and Miguel Colado. We are presenting a little bit differently than we have in the past, so hopefully it'll grab your attention as we proceed through the building.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miguel, CHA. What we have here before you is a small video and a little.
I'm sorry, could you just speak a little closer?
Yes, definitely. Is that a little better there? Currently, what we have going on in the administration suite, we're going through final finishes, and they're nearing completion, both on the first and second floor of the at and suite. As you can see from the video, wood doors installation has been completed, carpet is in. We are expecting to have the district admin offices furniture move in mid April, and that's moving along relatively well.
Okay, what we are looking here now is the auditorium. As you can see, all of the above ceiling painting has been completed. The white sound cloud panels are installed, along with the sprinkler and the lighting and all electrical and mechanical systems above that. Delivery of wood wall panels that will be installed where those orange wood plywood sections are, are scheduled to come in within the next few days, next week. Those materials will acclimate in the space to, for temperature, moisture, and then we anticipate starting the install within the next two to three weeks. Following the wood panels, we will then proceed with flooring. We have both carpet and polished concrete in there. Polished concrete will be completed, and then carpet installation will be proceeding.
Currently, the commons spaces, a few operations are ongoing. Wood panel installation will be commencing this week. Polished concrete floors are wrapping up on the second floor corridor and on the top of the learning stairs. And as we proceed, this week, this week, we'll be starting the learning stairs wood installation. That wood has been sitting for a little over a week now, so it has time to acclimate to the environment, and things are in good progress overall in the commons area.
Here we are looking at the commons area within one of the classroom pods. As you can see, the final finishes are nearly complete. Flooring, walls painted, casework, all the ceilings installed, lighting. Doors and hardware is nearing completion, which will allow us to close those spaces off. And we've discussed and gone through with the GC, they are actually looking to start coordinating cleaning of those spaces within the next couple of weeks, so that we will be able to close them off and keep moving throughout the commons and through the rest of the common areas.
So what you see here is, again, final finishes going up. We have final paint and touch-ups going on. We also have the wood panel installation within the classrooms. Operable partitions have been completed. We have some casework, toilet accessories that will be installed in the next week or so. Currently, the toilet fixtures are being installed, so these classroom commons in the classrooms within themselves are nearing the final face of the classroom wings.
This one right here is starting in the main gymnasium. You can see all of the final finishing of the walls, paints. The structure is complete for backboards. We have the roll-down partition that we just passed installed. Electrician is working on lights this week, and we are scheduled to receive the wood flooring beginning of April, and once the material again has acclimated to the environment, installation will proceed, followed by bleacher delivery and installation in mid-May.
Lastly, the video here is of the pool, construction progress. This week, the painters in there doing final paint in some of the north, east, and south walls. CMU block walls are being constructed for the pool bleachers. Light fixtures are currently being installed. The general contractor at the moment is wrapping up some of the liquid applied waterproof and membrane prior to the show pool leak test that will be performed in the next upcoming weeks. So, yeah.
This right here is looking at the mechanical outside courtyard, showing the two chiller units. All mechanical equipment has been installed with its connecting either pipe or ductwork throughout the building. The programming of controls for the BMS system is ongoing. Startup of the units is scheduled for April seventeenth, and balancing by HT Lions will follow that startup shortly after. We just received word this afternoon that the emergency generator that you see right there is going to be delivered and set this Friday. The electrician is currently programming the fire alarm system throughout the building for our scheduled April twenty-fifth startup. MDF and IDF racks are, the equipment is being installed. The IT department did a great job last week getting us our, our internet are temporary, and they are working arduously to get the equipment installed and get data throughout the building. And as I indicated, the bottom line there actually is a week and a half early for the emergency generator delivery.
The plumbing, the plumbing progress currently, we have toilet room fixtures being installed in the classroom pods starting in the third floor, and they will be working their way down towards the second and first floor of the classroom pods and moving forward to the area C and D progressively. We are, we will be testing the sprinkler lines for, again, the areas, the classroom pods A and B and the first half of area C, and that is on schedule for the end of March, so we're making really great progress with that. The gas, Pico, has been out and the gas has been turned on as of this week, so that's also a really great milestone that we have achieved so far.
And now Jamie Lynch for site landscaping.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Of course, they're still learning on how to present and should have led off by saying we have a lot of great images to share with the board this evening instead of change orders this month, so they'll remember that for the next presentation. But in light of the work on site and the good weather, I wanted to touch on site landscaping, because the community has seen a good amount of activity there that will be continuing this fall and then, of course, next year as we finish up the site. I just wanted to report to the board and the community that this process of determining the site grading, the site landscaping, the site stormwater was all a part of the original land development process that was undertaken by Schrader Group and its consultants. And so the district first engaged the community for design input on the site, and then we were in front of the planning commission, we were in front of township council, we received land development approvals, including a landscaping review by the township consultants and also from the county planning commission, and that landscaping design for the site incorporates all of the requirements of the township ordinances, which also includes the use of native plantings. And so it is a rather extensive landscaping plan that was employed for the project site, and at the end of the first season of construction, some hundred evergreens were planted, as an example, on the Milton property line, which also includes a landscaping berm that's going to have shrubs and ground cover on it. So there's quite a lot of attention that's being paid to landscaping. Just as a summary, this slide intends to identify the trees that are actually being removed as a part of the project, and as you think back all those years ago to the original site, there really weren't a lot of trees on the site, with the exception of those that are on the Arundel property line and those directly in front of the school. So just to give you an idea, we're removing about one hundred and eighteen existing trees from the site. Many of them are actually inside the courtyard of the existing building, and then you've seen the ones that are in front of the building that'll be removed to make way for the athletic fields, and then we've got a group of trees that are being removed on the Arundel property line, and that work started in the past two weeks. Many of those existing evergreens actually grew up around overhead power lines that run down the Arundel property line, and have really been a nuisance both to neighbors and to the school district over the years. There have been numerous occasions on which those trees have been limbed, but I'm sure folks remember times when tree limbs or parts of trees came down and caused power outages, also damaged neighbors' fences, ended up in yards, and so that entire tree line is being replaced as a part of the project. And this was some of the early information that was provided to those community members, and we got their input way back before we did land development. Just a couple of images of those, of those trees. You see how many power lines run through that tree line. It is a Pico easement, and so essentially, we're providing finally a service that removes those trees from the easement and from on top of our neighbors' fence lines. In the final arrangement for Keith Valley, we are keeping some of the foliage, some of the trees that surround the property. They're highlighted here in green. There's a couple of trees that are out on Meeting House that will remain. We've got trees that are on the Milton property line, and also I'll call it the back of the Arundel property line that will remain. But all of the other indications here, this entire property line along Arundel is being replanted. You can see these are all evergreen trees that are on Milton, followed by elm trees. We've got new tree line on the streetscape that is Upland Avenue, and then several, I'm sorry that it's small here, but there are new trees all along the frontage on Meeting House, and also all the way around the new parent loop and the new bus loop around the fields. So all in all, we're replacing the sixty-seven or so overgrown trees on Arundel with more than a hundred new evergreen trees. We've got three hundred and forty-eight new trees across the entire site. We've got three hundred and sixty-eight additional shrubs and five hundred and ninety ground coverings. Seems like, seems like a lot. We've tried to keep most of them as low maintenance, but some are also native planting species like burning bush and others, and then frankly, there just wasn't enough room on site for all of the trees required by township ordinance, so twenty-six additional trees are being planted off-site within the township. So that's kind of a summary of where we are on the landscaping plan. Finally, in your presentation tonight is a budget update. As I mentioned, nothing else from a cost perspective or cost event perspective to bring to you this evening. We still sit here with a couple of months to go in the building construction with more contingency in the project than we started with, so that's a good thing, knock on wood. That will continue. I'm sure there will be some events as we get down to it. We've worked very hard in the past several months on soft costs with Bill Stone and the entire administration, so that's the cost of furniture, the cost of equipment, the cost of everything that goes into this building. And again, we seem to be under budget right now with respect to our project budget for soft costs, so from a cost perspective, I believe that things are going well as we get toward the magical opening day. It looks like the superintendent wants to come to the microphone and probably fill you in with something that I might have missed, but I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
I had one question. On page nine, it showed the chiller units, and I know that they can be loud. I'm just wondering when they finally get installed and tested and all that, are there readings, are there buffers to make sure that the neighbors around the area won't be?
That's a great question. So they're both air-cooled chillers. We don't have the cooling towers that we have with water cooled like we have at the high school, which do tend to be a little louder. And then the way that the design operates is those cooling towers are actually in a niche at the loading dock, so they're not facing the neighbors. There's a block of the building that blocks them from the neighbors, and so I think they've been adequately shielded, to answer your question, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Will the classroom be affected by the noise? I see in slide nine.
So just behind those air-cooled chillers is actually a stair tower and corridor, so the glass that you see is actually some genius bars that are in the three-story space, not a classroom. There's a corridor that goes across, and then there's the entrance to each of the classroom wings, so it's not adjacent directly to a classroom.
Thank you. And I'm going to make you say native one more time. So you said, I think, two or three times in the presentation that many of our trees are native to our area, and that's in, yeah, complying to the ordinance of the township, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Hambley, Mr. Colado, thank you. We appreciate the ongoing partnership with you through the project. We are going to transition to the second part of the project, hopefully. Back one if you can. Thank you. So the second part of the project, I'm sorry, the second part of this, of the presentation is a continuation of the project. We have heard updates on the construction itself. Mr. Kircher and I are going to speak about how we're going to be transitioning the school into what we hope is to be a hub in the community. Schools have a unique opportunity to bring communities together. They are, we built and designed Keith Valley Middle School to be a location that the community can access, and we're thinking about ways to both bring it to life for the community and especially for our students. So every year, we think about how we transition students into Keith Valley. This year will be obviously a very unique transition into Keith Valley as we welcome our new sixth graders into a building that they have not yet been a part of, but we also welcome back seventh, returning seventh and eighth graders to a school that they are unfamiliar with, even as returning and veteran students. And so our families, many of whom went through Keith Valley as students themselves, either at the middle level or at the, at the high school level, are now being reoriented as well. So we're proud of the steps that we've taken to try to bring the building alive. We're going to share some of the things that we're doing to try to make it very student-centric and a very community-centric location for all of us. Mr. Kircher.
I assured Dr. Everslag that I wasn't going to come in my hard hat and vest tonight, because I tend to wear that more often than not during, during the week at Keith Valley. No, but we're so excited for this project really to be in the phase that it's going to now, from building site or from construction site now to occupying the building, and we're really excited to see things, our concepts, our ideas really coming to life. You know, from day one, we've incorporated student voice, teacher voice, parent voice, administration voice, education expert voice, married with engineering and architects to come bring in our vision, you know, forward. You know, we started with what do we want our program to be, and then we transitioned to how can a building support that program? And it's really the perfect example of what you see in front of us. At the bottom of the screen is our sixth grade teams, our seventh grade teams, and our eighth grade teams. Two years ago, we renamed our teams from six red, six black, six white, to the teams that you see in front of us, married to the idea that each grade level has a theme, and the themes and the team names all came suggested by students and then voted upon by students. So our sixth grade theme is hatters build a strong foundation. Our seventh grade is hatters take flight, and the eighth grade theme is hatters reach for the stars. So then the team names are roughly associated then with that, so you have the explorers, innovators, investigators, and pathfinders on the sixth grade. You have the journey, quest, odyssey, and voyage, and then you have comets, constellations, galaxy, and supernova for the eighth grade teams. So we're really involving the students in choosing that, as Dr. Everslag said, to build that community. Then what we've started to do is to try to have the students start to see the building. I've taken all the student council members, I only have seven vests and helmets, and I assured Dr. Domers and Dr. Everslag that I would take the students when the majority of the construction was not happening, so we did that after school was over, and that's one picture that you see there is me with the students taking them through, but I encouraged them to ask questions. We went through the entire building, they videoed. I'm sure it hit Snapchat faster than my words were coming out of my mouth, which is great, but we wanted them to see and be a part of that. I've given frequent updates on our program and the building to our HSA, and I've also been sending it to our staff. Almost the entire Keith Valley staff has been able to come through the building, some twice, some even three times, and we're continuing to do those tours this week as well. Our student council is going to be working together to put together a time capsule. We ordered a time capsule off of Amazon. We're going to make sure that we put in relics of Keith Valley that are student-created. The student council officers are going to write notes to future students, so in sixty years, when the next building is built, they can go back and see with that. I did promise them we'd put the Eagle Super Bowl win in the capsule as well, but we're definitely going to do that. And then we're also working with the student newspaper, our Hatter Chatter. I was interviewed by the staff the other day, and on Thursday afternoon, I'm taking four student photographers outside, and they're going to publish photos for that next issue. But as Dr. Everslag said, we really want our, our school to be connected to the community, so we're going to work to have student artwork displayed, especially in the community room where the board will meet, and then we're going to have students be ambassadors. We have seventh grade students who are training as eighth graders next year that will be our student ambassadors, and then we've also landed on a theme with, we're going to give T-shirts to students and staff next year, remarkable past, exceptional future. So we're really proud of what we have with Keith Valley, and also, if you look up to the left, right, you have the old logo on the edge of the top hat, but we've worked with Schrader Group to come up with a new Keith Valley logo as we open, open the building. Go ahead. Yep. So on this slide, you can see that we really worked hard to design it to connect the Happer Horsham community as well as what our students learn on a daily basis. So the, a really important process or project was creating infographics for every team. So there are four graphics, there are twelve teams, so you have forty-eight infographics, and the infographics, one will, will focus on local history, one is on state history, one is national history, and then one is a global perspective. So in here, you can see the examples, we included an infographic about the Union Library of Happerow, and then there's a paragraph that is informative of the, of the reader, for, for the reader. There are forty-eight of those graphics. Like I said, so Lawler Building, I'm most proud of one of them is Sir William Keith, because I think every student should realize and understand why we're named Keith Valley. So we have that graphic as well. So we're, we're, we're very, very purposeful. We were also very purposeful to connect them to curriculum and connect the graphics to show a very diverse population, too. So you're going to see lots of different faces, lots of different themes represented, and one of the themes you're going to see, and I don't know if, all right, do I have that? Is it working? For some reason, it's not working, the pointer. Oops. Uh-oh. Can we go back to, I got the pointer to work. Go one more back. Can I get the pointer? Maybe not. So on the, you can see the investigator's logo there. There are hidden hats. You've all heard of hidden mickeys. Each one of the team graphics has a hidden hat, so in the footprint of the investigators is a top hat on the right side. So each one of our team logos has a hidden, hidden hat, so we're very proud for that as well. And this just gives you, this just gives you another view of some of the graphics. Each team or each color is. Each team or each color is indicative of the floor. So orange is for the eighth grade, yellow is for the seventh grade, and then there's blue for sixth grade. And again, some of those graphics, you see, we talked about the Smithsonian Institute. We did a whole infographic on the history of the Willow Grove Naval Air Station from its time as Pitt Karen Field. And then we talked about artist Keith Herring being from Kutztown, but then spending time in Pittsburgh. And then the discovery of penicillin talks about some of the things that we talk about in our seventh grade biology curriculum. So I'm going to throw it back to Dr. Everslog, who's going to talk a little bit about our teaming.
Yeah, one of the, the opportunities that we had with the, with the, with the teaming structure was to really take a large building and try to make it into a small, comfortable learning space for students. So when you heard Mr. Hamblin, Mr. Colado talking and show the video of the learning pods, we're calling those teaming areas and you... My pointer is not working here. But, but can you go back one? You can see, this is, this view is actually where students would be coming off of the bus. They'd be coming off the bus and entering into the building, basically right in the middle and the heart of the building, on the second floor, what we're calling the second floor bridge. And looking straight ahead to the right side of the picture is the main stairwell that goes up and down. And then you can see, to the left, you can see the, the teaming areas. There's 12 of those. There's four, four on the third floor, four on the second floor, four on the first floor. And in each, outside the teaming areas has those like yellow accent walls or the orange accent walls with the infographics. So they have, each, each place has its space. If you're a member of the Investigators', you're going to know, this is, this is my team. This is my team. If I'm a parent coming for back to school night or open house, I'm going to be able to find the Voyage team right away because there's a logo right there, the unique logo for that team. And we use the graphics to provide learning opportunities for students throughout the buildings. You can see those on the, on the teaming areas directly ahead. And you can also, if you look to the left of the, of the picture, that at the end of those library commons learning stairs is the Innovation Center. And there's instructional graphics above that as well. And just to the left of that, it's hard to see, but there's a, there is... I see that, that red dot there. I just can't move it. There is a, a open, there we go, there's an open space right here. And it's, it's, it's glassed, and you can see the mechanical pipes behind it. And above it are some graphic around the instructional about what the purpose of those, of the mechanics of the building are. So there's just opportunities throughout the building to connect to learning and create, hopefully create a welcoming space where learning is expected in all aspects of the building. And what you see just over this railing is the library commons. And it doesn't look like a traditional library. And that was designed intentionally for the library commons to somewhat immerse with the classroom spaces and students to have access to, very easily, access to the resources in the library. There's also classrooms off the library space to the left. But the way the building comes together and flows, it really creates a real identity within the, the building itself. Okay, I'm going to talk just briefly around some of the community aspects of the building. There are two images to the right. The one at the top is obviously the pool. Our pool currently at Simmons is used frequently by the community, both school programs and community programs. And we are already beginning to schedule what those opportunities will look like in the new building. And so we have an eight-lane pool. It's going to be a community hub. We know that it's going to be accessed regularly. We are moving to resume a lot of the pool and aquatic programming that occurred pre-pandemic that has somewhat tapered off, but resuming that we're looking to do. And then in the bottom right is the community room, which will be the future home of board, of, of board meetings, but also be an opportunity for community groups to easily access a space that can be a meeting space for community groups. And we've tried to embed throughout the building a couple other, a couple other images and connections to the traditions of the current Keith Valley, which Mr. Kircher is going to discuss.
So again, it's my great pleasure to be able to talk about the history that we're going to continue. We're not going to forget the building that we're in because it has too much history. It started in 1959 as Keith Junior High. Then it became Hape Row Horsesham Junior Senior High School in 1963. And then it was that until 1992. So we're not just closing Keith Valley, the current building. We're also closing a chapter on the former senior high school. So I've been partnering with the Alumni Association. We're working to, you know, to preserve some issue, some elements of the high school that are there. But one of the things I'd like to point you out is the lower-left corner. We're working and calling this the Commemorative Bench. Our student council graciously donated lots of money to pay for the, the construction of this part. So we are taking a picture of the current building. It'll be behind the bench. And then in front of the bench will be bricks that are reused from the current building, cleaned up. So it'll be an area for students to gather and talk. But it's, it's a nice fitting kind of memory of the, of the former building. The other pieces, we're going to go through and take down some of the murals that are in Keith Valley that were painted by former teachers and bring those with us. There's a mural in the main lobby that was paid for years ago by our Home and School Association that was representative of students' opinions and ideas about Keith Valley. And there are numbers, symbols, and letters that combined a composite front of the building. There's the quilt. And there's also the Hidden Class of 1976 Rock that's right in front of the building that's behind two azalea bushes. In conversations with representatives of the Class of 1976, that rock is going to stay on-site. And we're going to move it to the, just off of the one soccer field that's there in the corner. And it'll stay as a, as a, a memento of that space being the location of the high school. So we're working to preserve that as well. And then we get a chance to close out the chapter on the building and welcome the new building. So on Saturday, June 14th, we're partnering, as I said, with the Hape Row Horsesham Alumni Association. We're going to be doing an all-day open house to celebrate that building, having the doors open, letting people walk through. We're going to work to have some planetarium shows so that people can, for one last time, see the 1968 planetarium that still runs for us at Keith Valley. We'll put down some memorabilia. I don't have a lot of high school memorabilia because that did come to the high school here when it moved in 1992. But there are a few things that we found from Keith Junior High and from the high school. And then we're going to do that. And then we've also worked, I know that, with, with DJ Schultz. We have John Morris, who went through and photographed all of the building. So I'm going to work with him. He took 360-degree pictures of most of the classrooms and the, and the hallways. So we'll have a forever electric, electronic memory of the building. And then we're going to work on having some soft opening, open houses for community and for students during the summer at varying times, some during the day and some in the evening. We're going to work with Mr. Anderson and create some video series about different places in the building and how traffic will work. And then we're going to obviously welcome our sixth grade students, who are always new to Keith Valley. So we'll be working with them. And then we're going to welcome the seventh and eighth grade students over the summer. Before that, in May, we're going to continue our fifth grade visits to Keith Valley. We're going to do a virtual tour. I'm going to steal some of the fly-throughs from this presentation tonight to show them, as well as we can maybe even, we could get some new ones up to date at that time and some other pictures for them. And then we do a very extensive team-building process with our Hatter ambassadors in May with the new students. Plus, they get a chance to hear our chorus and our band play so we can advertise our performing arts programs as well. And then we're going to do our, like I said, our traditional open house in August. I think it's usually the Wednesday before school starts. And then we're working on a groundbreaking ceremony for October as well.
So thank you, Mr. Kircher, for sharing that. Hopefully, you're starting to sense some of the efforts that we're taking to make the building come alive for our students and for them to have a smooth transition into the, into the new building. This final slide of the presentation is just a little bit of a reminder that while we're excited about the project coming to the point where we can occupy the building, that the project overall is not complete for another year. We have a lot of work to do on-site. And we also have, are going to have a gradual access to some of the athletic fields that we've had to access remotely for the last couple of years. So a huge thanks to the Keith Valley student athletes and their families and the coordination from the administration and the bus garage to try to transport students for, for a couple of years now where we've had to take students off-site. We've had many community partners that have allowed some field usage for us. But it has been, it has been challenging for students not to be able to go outside to the track and not to be able to go outside to the baseball field, softball field. So these fields are going to be coming back to us gradually as the project continues. But as you can see, the building itself is going to be open for school, school use and community. Pool, gymnasiums all available in August. Our main parking lot here for staff, which we're calling Lot A, which is almost really done now and is used now, it just needs to be resurfaced and lined, will be available this summer in July. We're excited that the tennis courts will be the first kind of outdoor, outdoor athletic space to be kind of rebuilt and resumed on campus for fall sports. And they, we expect them to be ready at the start of school in September. The, the future football field and track will not be available until fall of 2026. As you are likely aware, there's a huge mountain of dirt on that, on that location there that will ultimately, correct me if I'm wrong, any of our engineers, be placed in a hole that will, that will be here after this current building is demolished. So with the demolition of this building beginning hopefully in November, and then after it's being demolished, dirt will come over here. And then they, and then they would begin the construction of the football field and track with the anticipation of that being available in the fall of 2026. With the building access in this, being available this fall, of course, we need to have the parent drop-off accessible. And that will be accessible in this August for the parent drop-off here and some visitor parking that we're calling this Lot B. The fields themselves will not be available after the building itself is demolished and then refilled. The athletic playing fields will be constructed, and that will be available fall of 2026 as well. And then this area, which currently is a, an entrance to the site, will be repaved and reconstructed as the bus entrance. And that'll be done prior to the start of the year in August for buses to be able to access here. And then, of course, drop, drop students off here. The bus loop will be available for, for access in, in August. And, you know, one of the things that we like tremendously about the site is the separation of parent drop-off, having a long queue for parent drop-off, separating that from staff parking, which would enter here on Upland, and separating that from buses. So you don't mix buses and staff entering and parent drop-off. So from a safety standpoint, we really love that feature of the campus. And the timeline for the bus drop-off, of course, was, will be this summer in anticipation of the building opening in August. So I know that was a lot, but we thank you for your attention as we are excited about this next phase and really trying to bring the campus to life for our, our families and our students for, for a wonderful fall. Happy to take any questions.
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you for that presentation. I was excited before. Now I'm really excited. I know that many of the students that will be attending the new Keith Valley are excited as well. So thank you so much. I'm also very excited for the long parent drop-off. No more Meeting House Road backup, so, but that's the least of it. So thank you again for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our Policy Committee portion of the meeting. Ms. Schultz?
Thank you and good evening. Our Policy Committee meeting will address a range of finance policies. Mr. Bill Stone, Director of Business Affairs, will walk us through several proposed actions, including a new policy, several revisions and retirements, as well as a proposed renumbering of policy. And just so everyone understands, we've got copies of these, the new policies and the revisions, several weeks ago. So we have been able to review them individually. But now, following Mr. Stone's presentation and the opportunity for the board to discuss, the committee's goal tonight is to recommend the proposed actions for the board's consideration at the Monday, March 24th Legislative Action Meeting. So thank you. And then, Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to present these many policy recommendations that we have in the area of financial operations. The rationale behind these recommendations are twofold. One is to prepare the district for the upcoming transition to our new financial software, which will be coming in the, in the year of 2026. And also, a lot of these recommendations may look familiar. If you recall our discussion that we had on the Plan of Action recommendations from the Government Finance Officers Association Review that we presented at the January Finance Committee meeting. So there's a nice correlation here between that work and the transition to the new software and just generally the good practice of making sure that our financial practices are the most efficient for the district. So this is the detailed list of the policies that we'll be reviewing, as Ms. Schultz very well summarized. And I'll dive right in. The first recommendation is to make revisions to our policy number 610, which is called Procurement. The summary level of this policy is that we are combining four policies into one. So our, our policy 610 will combine the elements of the existing policy 610 and also policies 611, 612, and 613, which are purchases budgeted, purchases not budgeted, and cooperative purchasing. Since we are combining those elements into policy number 610, we're recommending the retirement of those three policies. So 610 will still govern our purchasing overall. We'll incorporate most of the elements of 611, 612, and 613, with a few exceptions that reflect more modern practices with purchasing. And so we'll just have that one policy, which should simplify our ability to comply with, with that policy. I'll highlight some of the new elements that are included in the policy 610. Something that we are doing, attempting to do across policies is to link to wherever there is a threshold that is adjusted by either the state or the federal government. We are, rather than having that specific dollar amount listed, we're including language that states that it gets adjusted every year based on whatever the state or federal government takes action on. So we've, we've added the number that's currently in the state code for quotes and bids, but added language that states it will be adjusted as the state makes the adjustment, typically in January of each year. And we're also going to be including that the board would annually acknowledge that adjustment to the purchasing threshold so that we would all be aware of that. We are strengthening the language around use of purchasing cooperatives to ensure that we are getting the most competitive prices when we use those bid-protected services to procure goods and services. To briefly summarize, we've set some internal thresholds that we'll have in regulation that require us to still get quotes for those purchases, even though not required by state law when, when using a cooperative. We are also adding language regarding procurement of professional services. And this language is, we're borrowing language from one of our neighboring school districts that requires the district to periodically obtain competitive pricing for professional services. Not required to do so in accordance with state code, but it's a good practice to do so. So once adopted, the administration will develop a timeline for the review of those services. And we'll have a schedule for when those requests for proposal will go out. Next, we're adding language... Next, we're adding language around the approval of contracts. And the reason that we're doing so is that the state code, when adopted in 1949, had a threshold that school boards needed to approve any contract greater than $100. And that threshold is still in place. It's very difficult to comply with that, just practically speaking, because most contracts that we enter into are greater than $100. But because it is state code, we still need to follow that. What we're putting in is some delegation of authority for those contracts that are less than that bid threshold at the state level that I mentioned. It's currently $23,800. That authority would grant the superintendent or their designee the ability to approve those contracts, sign them, and then bring them forward to the board for ratification at the next board meeting, assuming that the contract is below that threshold that I mentioned and it doesn't modify or negate or enter into any significant policy decision that has not been previously brought forward by the board. So as long as it's in concert with what the district is already doing, then that contract could be approved internally by the administration and then brought forward to the board for ratification. The last item is a change in the language around budget transfers. The previous policy restricted any purchasing outside of when, if a budget had been exceeded, the policy said you had to transfer funds from another account. We're still keeping that language because it's a good practice, but we're also allowing the expansion of if there's money in other accounts within that same budget group, that you can simply do that transfer and allow that purchase to move forward for the sake of efficiency of the operation. I'm going to take a pause here and ask for any, if there are any questions about our revisions to the procurement policy and the retirement of the three policies noted.
I have a question about the term telephonic under the quotations part. Is that strictly a phone conversation for the quotes?
That's correct. And how we document that is it is if we reach out for a telephone call, we'll simply document the date, time, and the amount that we were given. That language is directly from the code. It is a little outdated, given that we can obtain so much via the internet or by email, but it is still an option that is out there for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no other questions? All right, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. The next recommendation is a simple renumbering of an existing policy. That policy is our fund balance policy. It's currently numbered 625. To align that policy with the PSBA numbering system, we are recommending to change that number to 620. There are no revisions to the policy. It is simply just changing the number from 625 to 620. And therefore, if it would please the board, we would put that on the agenda for consideration on the March 24th meeting. Does not require a first and second reading as revisions and new policies do because it is simply just a change to the number.
Is there a former 620?
There's no, we do not have a-
That number was open?
The number was open. I don't know why we have a 625 instead of 620. Will soon be matching PSBA.
All right. Hearing no other questions, let's move on to the next.
Thank you very much. The next two policies I'll take together, these are both policy revisions, and they are related to our federal procurement guidelines. So the purchases that are made using funds from the federal government are governed by what's known as the Uniform Guidelines, or UG. These regulations have been in place for many years. These are not new regulations, but they change periodically. And they've received a lot more attention in recent years because of the federal ESER money that came in after the pandemic. So as more focus was paid on the Uniform Guidelines, it became clear that we needed to make a few revisions to the policies to make sure that we were compliant. And this was the result of our review that we received from the federal ESER monitor, which every school district has either received or is going to receive as part of getting ESER funds. There are attachments to Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance, where the substantive edits have taken place. Most of those are in the attachment entitled Procurement, similar to the revisions in Policy 610, where there is a stipulated threshold that gets revised periodically by the state government for the quotes and bids. There's also a threshold at the federal level for what they call micropurchases, small purchases, and formal bidding. Our previous policy had a fixed dollar amount in the policy. We are recommending to change the language to the updated fixed dollar amount, which is $250,000, but then adding the proviso that that number will be adjusted as it is adjusted by the federal government. The remainder of the changes within the policy and the other attachments included therein are to adjust capitalization and titling of certain positions. The other revisions for federal policies are Policy 626.1, Travel Reimbursement. Again, this policy last revised in 2016. And it's basically an alignment of our existing policies or existing practices to make sure that the policy language reflects that. So for example, the policy says that the federal programs coordinator is responsible for approvals, whereas we, in other policies, use the phrase superintendent or designee rather than naming a specific title. Similarly, the policy references the General Services Administration limits for travel reimbursement. The school board governs travel reimbursement, and so we just want to make sure that those limits are followed rather than the GSA limits. Ms. Schultz, I'll take a pause here to see if there are any questions else.
Are the attachments part of the policy? Do they remain constant, or are they changeable? How frequently could, would they be changed?
They are to be treated like the policy itself. So if there is a revision needed to these attachments, we would need to bring it forward for a first and second reading. It would make, the reason that PSBA is recommended in this structure is they're rather lengthy and they cover, there's a lot of content covered in each one, so they decided to put them as separate attachments rather than one lengthy policy.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Let's move on.
The next recommendation is a new policy, Policy 631, Procurement Cards. This is a, as I mentioned, it's a new policy despite the fact that the district has had procurement cards for several years. We wanted to put in place a formal structure around their use. Again, this was a specific Plan of Action recommendation that you saw in January. And we want to do this to make sure that we have good practices in place, but also to make sure that we are reducing any risk that we have associated with credit card fraud. And having these practices will help ensure that. The highlights of the policy are that we will create regulations that will define the approved users of district credit cards and the approved uses of district credit cards. Those folks who are granted the right to use a procurement card or a credit card will sign an annual cardholder agreement. And the policy stipulates that it's, that a procurement card is not to be a workaround for district purchasing practices. So the policies that are set forth in Policy 610 are not to be avoided by simply using the credit card. So for example, it would be inappropriate for someone to purchase something on a credit card for $25,000 without obtaining formal bids. But because a credit card is easier to use than a purchase, we would lack some of the controls to make sure that happens. We want to make sure that we have the proper protocols defined for those instances.
Any questions on that new policy?
I have one. Will there be low limits on those cards so those kind of things couldn't happen?
We have pretty low limits existing now. We intend to maintain those, yes.
All right, thanks.
Are there any others? All right, let's move on to the last one.
Thank you very much. The last policy is both a combination, revision, and renumbering. So we're ending with a bang here. The existing Policy Number 616.1 is entitled Electronic Records and Signatures. The PSBA policy manual recommends numbering that policy 800.1. So that is our first recommendation related to this. The revisions to the policy, electronic signatures, especially post-pandemic, have become very prevalent. Many of the contracts and documents that we sign are done so electronically. So we explicitly allow the use of electronic signatures, but we do so with the same authority as an ink signature. So only those individuals who are able to sign contracts on behalf of the district, those individuals are the only ones able to sign electronically. Even though it's easier to do so electronically, we still need to maintain that separation of duties. Similarly, any contract that is signed electronically has to be treated like a record that is a paper document, subject to the same records management plan that we have in place. And, you know, we need to take the same care with those policies or with those contracts as we do those signed on paper. And finally, it does not restrict the district's use of electronic signatures to a specific platform. For example, it doesn't say that we can only use DocuSign for signing contracts, but those that are charged with reviewing the contracts have to collaborate with IT to make sure that it is a safe platform to use, and we're not subjecting the district to any unnecessary risk by using a platform that would do so. So before I take any questions on this one, I'll just summarize what we are proposing for the board's consideration. First readings of revised Policies 610, 626, 626.1, the new 800.1, which was formerly 616.1, and a first reading of new Policy 631. We are also recommending first readings to retire Policies 611, 612, and 613, and a renumbering of Policy 625 to 620. Ms. Schultz, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? I just have one question. The recommendation to move the policy out of the 600 policy numbers, which is finance, to 800 is just simply because it's more of an operational, not a financial?
I presume that's the rationale that PSBA uses, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just back to Policy 610. I noticed the authority is stricken. Is that covered under the definition of responsibility? Or is it covered somewhere else? Or there's just no authority in that one?
If you'll, if you notice, there was no purpose previously. And so the purpose and authority generally align with each other. So it's simply a replacement of that authority with the purpose. And then you'll also note that there's a delegation of responsibility, which is a more common, we more commonly see that in our policy manual as opposed to the authority section. So it was simply to better align the format of the policy with some of the other policies that we have.
Doesn't need to be a section officially titled Authority?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any more comments or questions or further discussions on these policy actions? All right, hearing none. It's the Policy Committee's recommendation that the proposed actions move to the board's consideration on the Monday, March 24th Legislative Action Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the Community Input section of the meeting. This is the time for public to comment on agenda items or any matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may or may not be before the board. Community input is governed by Policy 006. Those interested in speaking during this segment of the community input are asked to register with the Board Secretary using the sign-in sheet in the meeting room. Your name will be called in order that it appears on the sign-in sheet. Once your name is called, please come to the microphone and state your name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes. It is not the board's practice to engage in dialogue with speakers.
Madam President, there is no one signed up to speak at this time.
Thank you. We'll now move to comments for board members and superintendent. Then I am looking for an adjournment to the meeting, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
David Brown, motion to adjourn.
No, second that, Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.